All right, let's move to our next item, which is of importance. It's an informational update around the sideshow activity in the unincorporated area. Response to that and how we're going to begin to try to move forward to address it. So I think we've got information from the Sheriff's Department this evening, Highway Patrol, as well as County Council. Who's going to start?
Captain Blanchard.
Good evening, thank you. So obviously, the sideshow problem has been steadily increasing in the unincorporated area, as well as our surrounding cities. Those sideshows is nothing new in the region and throughout the state. We've noticed an increased trend over the past several months where these sideshows are spilling into our residential neighborhoods and into our unincorporated area. So over the past several months, the Sheriff's Office has made it a very serious priority to work with our partners in our neighboring cities to have an intelligence-led policing process where we are gathering intelligence from intelligence centers, from crime analysis centers, and increasing our staffing on the weekends to be able to predict, identify, locate, enforce, and dissuade these sideshows. Within the last six months or so, we've realized that we can't solve this problem independently, partially due to the staffing requirements that it takes and the unpredictability of some of these sideshows. So we have partnered up with our neighboring agencies, our partners with CHP, the Hayward Office, the Castro Valley Office, and the City of Dublin. CHP offices, we partnered up with the Hayward Police Department and the San Leandro Police Department, and we are currently working on a program where we're going to collaborate our efforts. We are going to create a team of dedicated individuals from each agency to work together and collaborate where we can staff anywhere from fifteen to twenty officers and supervisors from each of those agencies, working together on specific weekends based on the intelligence that we gather for sideshows, to put out an enforcement team that's going to be able to, again, use the intelligence that we gather, work with our neighboring counties to track the sideshows as they come into the area, and then try to dissuade them from starting sideshows in our area, and if they do, use our training and our experience to come up with a plan to prevent it. So we focused a lot of time and a lot of effort into this program. We have the commitment of our surrounding agencies to participate with us. We have some great partners with the CHP and with Hayward, San Leandro Police Departments, and we will be up and running in February on a six-month pilot program to see the impact that we can have in our community and hopefully dissuade those that participate in sideshows to take their business elsewhere and not bring it into our unincorporated areas. We've heard loud and clear from our community members, the impacts that this has, the negative impacts it has on their family life, the negative impacts it has on the roadways. We obviously know the hazards that come with these sideshows, they're very dangerous, especially when they get larger numbers. The individuals that are participating in this are very well organized, they use social media, and they use information distribution applications that we don't have access to to coordinate these events, and it's very problematic for us, but we are taking it with a head-on approach, and we are working very diligently with our partners and with the county to try and find solutions and mitigate some of this.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? We'll ask questions, we'll hear from the public after we hear from all the speakers.
Hi, good evening. I just would like to say thank you for inviting us. I'm Dan Jack, Public Information Officer for California Highway Patrol, Castro Valley, and Hayward area. I just first would like to introduce the command staff here for the combined areas, Captain Austin Damier and Lieutenant Mike Novasell. Captain Damier, say a few words.
Good evening, Supervisors. Thank you very much for having us out. I just wanted to come out and introduce myself. I'm new in the Hayward area as a commander. I come to you with twenty years law enforcement experience, majority of that's in Alameda County, worked in Oakland, Hayward, the Alameda Regional Auto Pass Force, and ATF Task Force, so I do come with a lot of experience. I live in San Lorenzo, I have family members here, and I live in Castro Valley, so I'm really looking forward to working with the community, the supervisors, to make sure that we're taking care of traffic safety issues. For those of you that don't know, we are beginning the merger process with the Castro Valley and Hayward areas into one command. We'll probably be moving into that command sometime next year. We're going to have a new office that's going to be located at Santa Clara and Jackson Street, and we're going to have one large command, so it's something we're really excited about, we're going to be able to eliminate some redundant positions within our command and put more officers towards community-oriented policing to tackle some of these issues. So, thank you very much, I look forward to working forward with you, and real quick, I'll let Mike introduce himself.
Good evening, my name is Michael Novasell. I've been with the CHP for twenty-three years, started my career in Rowan City, I was there for ten years. After that, I joined the Golden Gate Division Canine Unit, I worked with two canines for eight years, promoted to Sergeant in 2017, worked in Castro Valley for two years as a sergeant, one year in Dublin, and in the beginning of 2021, I promoted to Lieutenant, I worked two years in Oakland, and now recently transferred to the Hayward area. I look forward to working with you, being part of the community, and solving any issues that we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate that. So I just wanted to kind of echo what the captain said. This is a joint effort, and we want to give a special shout-out to Sergeant Cully from Alameda County Sheriff's Office, who's kind of spearheading a lot of this and putting down a lot of the information and a lot of the, put a lot of effort into this going forward, and the captain as well. Just providing an update, there has been no serious, big sideshow activity in the area since about December twenty-first, and, you know, we've been getting information this whole time, updates from the community members. A special shout-out to Mr. Anderson, who's here tonight. Mr. Anderson has been very, very vocal and outspoken about this, we appreciate folks like him who have really been active in reporting these issues. Hayward CHP, Hayward Police Department, San Leandro Police Department, and the Alameda County Sheriff's Office are going to be working in collaboration, as the captain has stated, and we're going to be responding and training on how to better respond to these activities that are taking place. What we're going to be doing moving forward, as you can see to the right, we have a social media post we just recently put out, is we're going to be trying to bring as much attention to this illegal activity as possible and awareness, and one thing that's going to help us do that is getting tips from the community so we can better respond. So you can see here, we have a post which we put on our social media, and we continue to do posts like that, but we've created an email address where it's a tip line where you can send us pictures, you can send us information, and we will respond to that. That information, that intelligence gathering, is crucial to combat illegal sideshows occurring in the unincorporated area, as well as there's a call, a line, it is monitored, it's for non-emergencies only, I just want to stress that. If you're seeing an emergency happening or any sideshows taking place, you can still call 911 and report that, but that is the 510 number, 901-0373, and that email address, it may not show up on the screen, is 345-reckless-driving@chp.ca.gov. And we did bring handouts for our presentation, they're on the table here, so if anybody wants to get a handout, that's all included. So this, this team also is, there's a component of it, it's a special enforcement unit from the CHP, which consists of five officers and a supervisor, and that special enforcement unit will not only look for that reckless driving and sideshow activity, but also will focus on aggressive driving in the neighborhoods, speeding on particular roadways, major arterial roadways, or just in the neighborhoods. So you can report all that to us through those lines, and we can address that moving forward. And this is really, we think is crucial to help address the concerns that have come up from the community here, and we really appreciate that. So this regional sideshow enforcement team, also called Reset, is a collaborative effort, again, is spearheaded by the Sheriff's Office. It's from CHP side, we're going to have the Hayward Office involved, Castro Valley, which, again, they'll be combined, Dublin area, and we're going to be committing at least eight uniformed officers and one sergeant per detail. We also, as needed, will have CHP air operations involved, which is crucial to monitoring these sideshows. We don't want to create any further risk to public safety, sometimes if you go into the middle of a sideshow, people might feel threatened, or you might feel cornered, they might produce a weapon, we don't want that. If we can monitor it from a distance, that's also beneficial to us. So moving forward, we're going to continue to train, as the captain said, in February, we were going to conduct some operations moving forward, about six months, on a test attempt basis, to kind of evaluate how the progress is, but we're going to start training an additional twenty-two officers and two sergeants in February. These officers are going to either join the team or be on a rotation through the team to, again, combat this activity. So some other things we're doing with intelligence gathering, we do have officers that are trained in monitoring, you know, outlets, social media accounts, things like that, we have those resources. Some resources are confidential, we don't like to put out, that are very beneficial to us as well. So where and when we can gather that information, we're going to gather it and put it to work, and that's at a regional level, a local level, you know, there's fusion centers that we can work with to help broadcast this and try to combat this, if it happens to spread from one area to another, we can kind of get ahead of that. We also have grants that are provided through the Office of Traffic Safety and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration that might be able to assist us in this matter, such as pertaining to eliminating street racing and sideshows, there's grants specific to that, and to also regulating aggressive driving and reduce speed. There's focus grants that we can utilize to put extra officers on the street on a grant to bolster our numbers and make a presence, if anything, show the doors in the community, and make sure these folks that are engaging this legal behavior know that police are there, CHP, the Task Force, the Sheriff's Office. So with that, we just want to say thank you again for welcoming us in your community, thank you for your concerns. If anybody has any questions, myself or the captain or lieutenant, I'd happen to answer.
We'll have questions in just a second, let me see if County Council has anything to report on, and then we'll go to public comment.
Hi, thank you, this is Faran Khan, Deputy County Counsel. I do have a progress report from my office. We are in the process of drafting an ordinance with consideration of similar ordinances in multiple jurisdictions, including the cities of San Jose and Stockton, and the counties of Santa Clara and San Diego. Our Alameda County ordinance will cover unincorporated county. The ordinance will prohibit sideshows, specifically street racing and reckless driving exhibitions, and we're building off a definition of reckless driving in vehicle code 23103. Ordinance will also prohibit knowingly being present for the purpose of observing a sideshow. The ordinance will prohibit knowingly encouraging, promoting, instigating, or facilitating a sideshow as well. In violations of this ordinance will constitute a misdemeanor. We are also looking into the assessment of penalties, and we hope to have a draft ready to circulate in sixty days. That's it for the progress report, and I'm happy to pass on any questions to the attorneys working on the ordinance.
All right, I want to thank the County Council, Highway Patrol, and Sheriff's Department for this update this evening. Before I hear public comments and questions, let me just say, as the county supervisor represents this area, and I've been the supervisor since 2001, I've always felt we were blessed to have both CHP and sheriff providing law enforcement here in the unincorporated area. I've always thought that was, you know, a blessing, especially after, you know, I live in Oakland, I was on Oakland City Council, and it's much more challenging in Oakland. So I've always felt trying to make sure we have appropriate law enforcement, professional enforcement, that in the unincorporated area has been extremely important to me. We hold a traffic safety meeting through my office, and I know the CHP and the Sheriff and Public Works and others participate in that, because traffic safety is an extremely important priority for me. And it's important only because I know my constituents have stated that to me over the course of time. The sideshow, I and my office talked with the undersheriff, the CHP, about the sideshow back in 2016. We also met with representatives from Oakland, from the state, et cetera, and we were basically stating that if we didn't get a handle on this sideshow, this was back before 2016, it wouldn't get better, it would get worse, and we seen it get worse. It's gotten worse because it's proliferated to other jurisdictions, it's gotten worse because it takes place on freeways, on bridges, it takes place just everywhere, and law enforcement is overwhelmed with it, and then the sideshow's gotten worse because now there's all sorts of other illegal activity there, gunfire and other things. So I'm extremely pleased that the CHP, the Sheriff's Department, will be partnering together and with other allied agencies, San Leandro, Hayward, et cetera, to crack down on sideshow activity, at least in my jurisdiction. And the point is, I've already stated this publicly when I've been, when I've been asked about it, the sideshow isn't just an issue for this area or this region, it's a statewide issue, so maybe we can set the example, and possibly maybe the Attorney General and others might recognize the severity of this and the need for a statewide effort to address the sideshow activity, because it has gotten out of hand, it affects the quality of life, it affects public safety, and it needs to be curtailed. And so I'm just, I want to make sure the public knows, our law enforcement professionals know, as long as I'm the county supervisor, you're going to have my support, you're going to have my unwavering support. The ordinance that County Council's moving to do, we've held up on this ordinance for about a year, only because County Council's been overwhelmed, so I'm very pleased that we're going to be moving this forward and trying to get an ordinance here in about sixty days, because I do feel the crackdown on the sideshow isn't just the people involved in it, it's the spectators, it's the promoters, everybody needs to be held accountable for that type of behavior. Finally, people have said, well, let's just let them, let's just make a place available for folks to do their, you know, their illicit behavior with vehicles, and I've been very consistent on this since my days as a city councilperson in Oakland and as a county supervisor. We can provide them with that, but that's not going to stop it, because they just want to do illegal behavior. The folks who want to behave properly, they might go there, but the rest of the folks who are doing the sideshow, they want to do this because they want to break the law. And it's my job, working with the law enforcement, to ensure that people are held accountable for their behavior. So I just want people to understand where I'm coming from on this. There's no ifs, ands, or buts in terms of where I'm coming from on this. I want this to be addressed to the best of our ability, and I'll do whatever it takes to support law enforcement in order to focus and target on this, and at least maybe make it not as inviting in our neck of the woods as it might be other places, because we do see it everywhere, so I just want to state that for the record. Now we can have any public comment or questions that folks might have.
How you doing tonight? I just want to say thank you guys to the Sheriff's and the CHP for all you guys doing, thank you all, also, it happened in front of our house in our neighborhood. I appreciate it, because we've got little kids, and the kids are ones that are extremely terrified. They don't even want to go outside by themselves anymore, you know, so I appreciate it. Supervisor Tam, I was just wondering if you heard anywhere back from Public Works about any of the speed bumps that, I think Amber Lowe was her name, she was talking about before, putting those little black dots throughout the intersections, and I know the cold weather and the rain.
I emailed them today to ask them what their progress is.
Yeah, I know the rain and the cold, we were just wondering.
The rains decided before.
Correct, understand.
So I just emailed them today, just to see like where are they, when they get back from Alameda.
Okay, all right, that was all, I just want to say thank you guys for your help on the situation, appreciate it. Officer Blanchard, we see guys out there doing their jobs as well, so thank you very much.
And did you speak at the last meeting?
Yes.
So you're the one, okay, all right, good, I'm glad Supervisor Handoff is on it and Sheriff's on it, because you're, what you were describing at our last meeting was just horrible, I'm glad.
Caller, you're on the line, you have three minutes, Michael.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's Michael Freed from Cherryland, and I want to thank Officer Daniel for his presentation in the CHP's meeting in December, I think it was December, anyway, just had a couple of calls to try to mitigate these sideshow things, and I'm wondering if there's any component to also address the increased number of the Take Back the Streets bicycle groups that are in sort of a, it seems to me, one of the areas where there might be at least some education for getting some of these kids at least stopped and, you know, talked to about wearing helmets and maybe staying on the right side of the road. That's sort of an aside thing, I think maybe there should be some effort into addressing that as well as the sideshows, because it's kind of like the juvenile way of doing it on your bike, and you finally get your car, then you can, you know, go out to the sideshows. Anyway, the other thing I was wondering is, could there be any educational component of restoring, you know, driver training, driving money from the state to put that back into the public school system, because, I mean, I was raised, and that's why, hopefully still remain a good driver at this age. So anyway, just to those, and thank you all for your efforts.
Mr. Barron?
Do you want to answer this question?
Sure. Michael, I think I understood your question, because I know we've talked about this before, concerning these large groups of bicycle, whether kids or, I've seen adults unfortunately participate in this illegal behavior, taking up a lane or creating a block on the road, whatever it is, oftentimes they're filming this activity, they're stunting, unfortunately, we even seen them on 238, three or four of them taking a lane on 238 some months ago. So as this happens, we do get calls on it, we go out there, we have issued citations in Castro Valley. Unfortunately, not too long ago, there was a juvenile that was hit on East Fourteenth, he was doing a wheelie, riding the wrong direction, and we had to respond and conduct an investigation on that. So as we're seeing this activity, we are taking enforcement action, and this is something that our special enforcement unit, we talked earlier about our five officers and a sergeant, that's actively going right now. So before even February, where we're going to see more of this sideshow response from the Reset Task Force, we have that special enforcement unit going, and they've been working on projects like addressing the issues on Crow Canyon and Powell Marison, Redwood, and the unincorporated areas, the roadways there, and then also in Cherryland and Ashland, focusing on some of the lower Grove areas as we're speaking, so, so thank you for that, we're continuing to look at that, Mike.
And Mike, your phone reception is not very good, so you broke up a lot. Keith Barrows from San Lorenzo, addressing that bicycle issue, maybe, you know, kind of like, kind of piggyback on what we do with some of the sideshow activities, maybe if you develop an ordinance or whatever it is, when this business is going on with the, with the blocking the roadways of bicycles, I think confiscating a few bicycles might put an end to that kind of thing. Anyway, I want to say that traffic and pedestrian safety is very important to me also, it's what got me involved in many of these public matters a little over twenty-five years ago, and I'd like to say thank you for your response from Dan and your fellow CHP folks here and all the other law enforcement agencies, thank you for your response to this issue, because it is a very important one. I know we've probably got a little bit of a break from Christmas and New Year's and then the weather, as far as the sideshow is concerned, I guess they'll probably start to pick up, or attempt to pick up as the time goes on. Also want to thank Mr. Anderson, we've never met, I've seen you at these meetings before, and it's Mr. Anderson and his neighbors and fellow Ralv Rousers, that's how, that's how things get done, and thank you for helping make a safer community and not hiding or just shaking your head or moving away, you did something, and I'd like to shake your hand before I go on. Really appreciate what you're doing. I'd like to also ask that when this, this information, that we make sure we get this information, particularly these phone numbers and these contacts, into the San Jose Village Home Association newsletter that comes out, and, you know, a nice big, bold, right up there, you know, have them put it there where everybody's going to see it, so, you know, some people just get that thing and toss it, but that would be a real good thing. And I was going to ask, I also was going to ask a question about the physical mitigations that Public Works, I was assuming we're going to get an update here at this meeting. I look forward to, I look forward to hearing from Jared, I'd like to know also what they said at Public Works. Anyway, thank you again, thank you Nate, and thank you again, Mr. Anderson.
And just to, just to say real quick, Keith, we did provide it to, at the last Homer Association meeting, we provided that info on the reporting sideshow and all the stuff we just talked about.
Caller, you're on the line, you have three minutes, Anne.
Hi, Anne Maris here, looks funny to see my name up there, Dr. Anne. I'm a resident of Castro Valley, and I want to, I want to make some comments about the sideshows with regard to the community development here, and I want to first off thank the sheriffs and the Highway Patrol for letting me feel safe in my neighborhood and for the, you know, the excellent job that I see you out there doing every day, so, so thank you for that. I feel like you were being burdened by a problem that, you know, like many, you didn't make. This sideshow thing, in my opinion, is a result of taking away all of our forms of entertainment, all of the places where people could drive a four-wheel car, or could drag race, or could shoot a gun, or could roller skate, or could go to a drive-in movie, or could go to a flea market here and meet neighbors and trade money and goods, you know, we've lost all that, and meanwhile, we're putting in thousands more units, and it's just frightening to me where we're going. And my opinion is that, I'm a biochemist, a scientist, and that humans are animals too, and I'm not an expert in your field, I really admire your solutions and your training at every level there, and so I appreciate that, I'm not speaking to that, but I'm speaking to the fact that human beings are animals living in an environment. We, we, we react to pressure, and we know that, and so I feel, whenever we see residents fighting residents, residents not happy with other residents' behavior, we need our higher-ups to take responsibility, for example, our supervisors, and to, to look at the root problems, because we can't keep building on this pressure pot and then expecting people to just live in their little crackerbox apartment and go to work and go back to their apartment. No, kids and everyone, we need, we need places to recreate, to, you know, and I realize we're getting out of the vehicle era, the car era, but, you know, a lot of people still enjoy their vehicles, and where do kids have that they could race their family car, take their station wagon, you know, like we used to have, or go to a roller rink or drive, we don't have that for them anymore. So, so I just basically want to empathize with the various levels of law enforcement, and I appreciate making more ordinances, and I just think that looking more intelligently at the root of, of the problem, in particular with all this development planned, you know, right, it's just frightening to me where we're going. So I would hope that all this money getting put into crime recidivism and everything, you know, there's a lot of money. And yet we don't see any solutions. We see undulations. We, we see things getting worse as far as recreation for kids and young adults. And so, you know, it's frightening to have someone come do a pop-up party in your yard or to spin cars around, you know, right, right here or shoot guns off, which is what happens where I live on Grove Way fairly regularly. So I just implore the supervisors to think creatively of including recreational possibilities for kids, young adults, and us old people too. Thank you for listening.
I have no more online speakers.
All right. So I want to thank the speakers and, and Anne, you know, you've heard, heard me say this before. We're gonna be putting together a specific plan for South Castro Valley that might help to alleviate some of the dirt and recreation and open space that I know you've been a very strong advocate for. You know, there is a strong push to have more development, more housing. And I don't think we're gonna be able to avoid that, but we can try to craft our general plan or specific plan, how all this might take place. So I agree with you, we need the recreation, but I'd also state, some people are just gonna act inappropriately regardless of whatever we do. And so it's like a parent with a child. You've got to establish some boundaries. There's gotta be some accountability and that's what government is here for, to ensure that there's orderliness. There's not chaos. Otherwise, yeah. So, but I do recognize what you're saying and we are gonna be working on that particularly in Southern Castro Valley area that you reside in. And so I think that's moving through the Castro County National Planning Council as I, as I speak. And then I do, and yeah, there was no presentation from public works this evening. So Keith's right, we should have public work speaking because some of the sideshow activity can be prevented through engineering. It's, once again, it's not a panacea. None of this is a panacea. But all of that is required, the education, the engineering, enforcement, et cetera. So we'll continue to monitor this and as appropriate, have this item back before us as necessary. I don't know if Daniel wants to say anything. Dr. Walt Desenbet, the head of our public works agency, do you want to weigh in on this at this point in time?
The only thing I would say is that we do have some measures that we will be putting in. Unfortunately, we got kind of derailed because of the storm. All efforts right now, all hands are on, on trying to mitigate the impact of the storm. But we do have an agreed solution where we'll be putting bar dots at various intersections to at least discourage these sideshow activities. So we should be putting them in very soon, soon as we get some relief in mitigating the storm impacts.
Thank you. Cause I know we've seen those dots. They've been, I know in Oakland, they've put it to that at certain locations and it has prevented it. Really all it does is it just moves it to someplace else. So that's why you put those dots in, but you still need these guys and gals. Because like I said, there's some people just not gonna behave properly and we know that. And maybe I'm just jaded and you can call me that, but I know I've seen too much and experienced too much to trust that people are gonna behave properly. They aren't unless we have some rules and we have some consequences and we have some accountability.